I would like to reconvene this meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of May 18, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call and roll and make an announcement about accessing the meeting?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 85258625628. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be unmuted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is the swearing-in and badge-pinning of Fire Chief Todd Tuggle. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
City Manager Stillwell will introduce incoming Fire Chief Todd Tuggle, and Mayor Patino will administer his oath of office, followed by a badge-pinning by his wife, Julianne.
And City Manager, Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
It would be my honor. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we're very pleased to formally swear in our new Fire Chief Todd Tuggle. In his 15 months with the city, he's served as deputy fire chief and then interim fire chief. He's distinguished himself through leadership, asking thoughtful questions, and being prepared with research answers. He's an effective communicator. He keeps beating the drum with his employees about teamwork and staying focused to serve the community. Chief Tuggle supports his staff. He invests the time and energy to get to know each fire employee. He congratulates them on their achievements. He walks the walk about professionalism and proficiency in their ability to complete the mission efficiently, cost-effectively, and in a courteous manner. This is an opportunity to acknowledge that one person alone cannot be responsible for serving and protecting our city. Chief Tuggle does it with the strength of the others who stand with him. Firefighters are civil servants as sworn officers. When there's an emergency in our community, firefighters are one of the first on the scene. They're at accidents, rescues, medical emergencies, fires, and many other critical incidents. Everyone in the department is moving the ball forward and contributing to the mission. It's an exciting time tonight, not just for Chief Tuggle, but for all of us in the community as it signals movement in our organization in a forward direction, and it's a milestone for our city. And so, it's our pleasure tonight to recognize Chief Todd Tuggle.
So, Chief Todd? If you will come down to the microphone, I will administer the ceremony oath of office. Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support and defend-
Support and defend-
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
-against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance-
-to the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
-without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
I will well and faithfully-
-discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter-
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now, his wife Julianne will pin the badge on him. So, Chief Todd, would you like to say a few words when we're ready to the podium?
Thank you. Is it on? Is my on?
Nope.
No. Not on. Okay. Now, I'm on. Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thanks, people.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for the support, not just tonight, but as City Manager said, for the last 15 months. It's been a great journey to get here, and I'm very thankful for your support. I think the city's stance as we climb out of the pandemic is a testimony to leadership, not only just this council, but previous ones as well. I want to thank the City Manager. Jason, thank you for the nod. I really appreciate this opportunity. It's an incredible one, and it's an exciting time to be here. I want to say thanks also to the department directors, the team with which I serve, my peers already. They've stepped up to be friends, partners in this process, team members, and on certain occasions mentors as well. And I'll give a nod to one of the department directors. There are actually several department directors in this room who've filled that role, so thank you. And I feel it's probably worth saying thank you to a former department director, Leonard Champion, former fire chief, and his role in me being here and the guidance and mentorship he gave in the year that I was here with him. So, thank you, Leonard, if you're watching. I want to say thanks to the department and the staff that I work with. As Jason mentioned, this is not just a one-person show, as we all know, but I want to give a shout-out to the department. We have 66 members who have persevered through this pandemic. They've worked really hard to stay committed to the mission of the community, and I believe they've done it with poise, and they've done it with class, and they've done it with professionalism. And I want to thank each and every one of them tonight for the job that they've done. They deserve a huge round of applause and a huge hand. Thank you. They've done an excellent job, and as we get through this pandemic, as we see our city and our department rising through it, there's a lot of thanks that belongs to them, so thank you to the department. And lastly, I want to thank my family. My wife, Jules here, stalwarts, and I have a lot of skills, I guess, that I've developed over the years that I think are directly attributable to her friendship, partnership throughout. We've been married 25 years in October, and I owe her a lot in that regard. I want to say thanks to my kids. Our oldest one is in the Army in North Carolina. He's on FaceTime right now. And to our other kids here that have joined us, that were able to join in person. Thank you to all of you for your support in this move. We moved here a year ago, picked up in the middle of high school, in the middle of junior high, in the middle of elementary school, and they've been sports. They've been at it, and I appreciate that support to be here. I think they've been the better for it. You know, it's a good place to live, so I really thank you, everybody, for this opportunity. Really excited for what the future holds for the city and for our department. We have some great plans, and I thank you again, the council, and the staff for setting us up for success as we come out of this pandemic, and I think our community is stronger for it, and we're looking forward to a promising future. Thank you very much.
I can answer that question.
Yes, ma'am.
You've mentioned sports, so tell us about your swimmer that you have. I'd like to know.
You might hear a little bit from her, a note of gratitude from her here in the next few minutes during public comment, but I'll briefly say that part of the reason we moved here was for Santa Maria Swim Club. Our daughter, all of our kids swam or swim. Our daughter happens to have been very fortunate to be a very high-level swimmer, and when we were looking for swim clubs, Santa Maria Swim Club, Coach Ashmore was one of the folks that was an option, if you will, to come to and could support what her goals and aspirations are. So, in a few weeks, we're going to travel to Omaha, Nebraska for Olympic trials, where Claire and her teammate Parker Reynolds are going to compete, and so we're thankful for a 50-meter pool that we have access to, or the kids have access to anyways. So, yes, to answer your question.
We shall, in the name of God, and we in our prayers, absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chief Todd. Our next item this evening is a proclamation, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for the Public Works Week. City of Santa Maria proclamation. Whereas the City Council of the City of Santa Maria has supported the role of the Public Works and Utilities Departments as vital ingredients to the community and an integral part of the residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed community is vital to the continued operation of public work system and programs such as the production and delivery of clean water, wastewater collection and treatment, store water collection, treatment and control, solid water collection and disposal, streets and highways, public transit, public buildings, fleet services, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, and as well as their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent on the effort and skills of public works official, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works and Utilities Departments is materially influenced by the residents' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, the Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, Allison Patino, hereby recognize the week of May 16 to 22, 2021, as the National Public Works Week, and this proclamation will be received by Sarah Peet from the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, for recognizing National Public Works Week. This year's theme is Stronger Together, and this is a perfect description of our city as our public infrastructure is designed, built, and maintained by not only the Public Works Department, but together with Utilities and Recreation and Parks Departments. It's an important job, and each and every member of our departments plays a critical role in our overall success. This past year has been exceptionally challenging, as you know, yet our city's team of professionals have worked together, never skipping a beat, to continue providing our essential services and keep them operating when there was so much uncertainty all around us. To me, that really demonstrated our dedication to public service. We thank you for recognizing our contributions in the community, as oftentimes, our jobs seemingly go unnoticed, and we look forward to working together, along with our residents, to provide a high quality of life within the City of Santa Maria. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, Public Works does so much in the city to make our city look great, our parks, the water, the sewer, everything, and it's those things that people don't see.
Right.
They wouldn't see it until it's gone, and then we would really hear from them.
Right.
But thank you very much for all that you do in Public Works. Next, we have the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, if I may interrupt?
Yes.
Perhaps I should do my report before public comment?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yes.
Just to get back to that area.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. With respect to the two items that were presented to council, instructions were provided in both the anticipated litigation and the current litigation to council to take back to those respective cases.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Public comment period, Madam Clerk?
Yes. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. As a reminder, if you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand using the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal, or if you're participating by phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one speaker, but I also have received one written communication from an anonymous person today that I placed on the dais for each of the council persons expressing concern about not being open to the public masking criterias and housing conditions and rights of citizens to be able to participate in the meeting and without having to wear masks.
Thank you.
And we do have Claire on the line, Claire Tuggle, who wishes to make a comment. Claire, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Claire Tuggle. I'm a swimmer that I represent Santa Maria Swim Club, and I just wanted to come on here on behalf of me and my teammate Parker Reynolds. Sadly, he cannot be here because he's at league championships for high school swimming, but we just wanted to come together and say thank you so much to everybody that has helped us get to our goals. We both are traveling to Olympic trials in Omaha, Nebraska in a couple weeks, and we just wanted to come together and say thank you for all you guys do for us and helping us open the pool as quickly as possible, getting in long course time for us so we can be our best when we go to trials in a couple weeks. And that's it.
Thank you, and good luck to you. This is great. I mean, what you've had to go through, just emotionally, just to get into that pool to start practicing again is, you know, with the COVID and everything, so good luck to you and to your family.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments? Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar in a minute.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, wait. Just, I have one question.
Sure.
In regards to item 3H, the asset and landscape maintenance fees, and can I ask it?
Do you want to say that?
It was just, I was just going to request the price, how is this, how is determined the price of the landscaping?
Okay. Let's just-
The landscape? Yeah, how is that determined?
So, Madam, Councilmember Escobedo through Madam Mayor, so the landscape districts are established, the rates are established by voter approval and then escalated by law, as allowed, to provide the specific benefit that people with adjacent land benefit from for that landscaping. So, these are new properties being developed that have landscape frontage, and so they pay that fixed rate to maintain that landscaping above and beyond what the city would normally be able to provide through its normal tax rate. So, it's an established rate and one that's established through the landscape district law.
And is that set on as, depends on the square feet?
The square foot frontage. So, I think one of them pays, and it's based on their frontage, that the amount that they face the landscaping, and so one of the parcels, it will be paying about $500 a year and the other one about $350 a year.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield? Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Soto?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Yes. The City Council will receive a presentation of a program updates and overview of enrollment results by Lena Williams, manager of Energy Account Services with Central Coast Community Energy. And Lena is on the line, and I'm going to ask her to unmute, and she will be giving the presentation. And Lena, I'm going to turn on your PowerPoint and-
Thank you.
And give you remote access, so just a moment. Okay, you should be able to maneuver your PowerPoint.
Let's see. Wonderful. So, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members, and thank you for having me this evening to provide you with your first and many Central Coast Community Energy Annual Member Agency Updates, in this case for the City of Santa Maria regarding, of course, the results of enrollment, and as previously mentioned, also to provide some updates on our energy programs that are already available to members of your community. I would like to just kick this off. For those who may not have seen one of our presentations before, or maybe members of the community and want to understand how a CCA or a community choice aggregator works, we, as the Joint Powers Authority through a CE, actually goes out and purchases the energy that is being delivered to the members of the community who elect and enroll, still by PG&E. So, the services began in January, that enrollment window opened up and continued through to the end of March. Customers would have begun to see us reflect on their PG&E bill beginning as early as their statements in February. We are a joint powers authority that is made up now of about 33 communities. We are along the central coast, including our initial three counties, Santa Cruz, San Benito, and Monterey County. Last year, we had Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo enroll and begin services, and now this year, we have 11 additional communities, including the City of Santa Maria, joining us in services. And by the time we complete our last enrollment in January of next year with the City of Hilton, that will be our full 33 communities. Within our board, we actually are governed by three different boards. There are a policy board, and I would like to thank Mayor Patino for actually representing the City of Santa Maria on the board. We have our operations board additionally, and we have our city manager, Stillwell, who I would like to thank for sitting on that board. And then we also have the Community Advisory Council, made up of members of the communities that are actually within our service area, and the City of Santa Maria is currently being represented by John Hughes, so thank you as well. We've had some mini accomplishments, some of our most recent that I would like to point out that are here and have been updated over the last year. We did receive our A rating from S&amp;P, so that's, as a credit rating, that was actually the first A rating given to any CCA in the state of California, so of course, it's not easy to achieve, and it allows us to actually have stronger negotiating powers. We go out to look for opportunities to purchase cleaner renewable energy for our service area. Additionally, we have had an opportunity to deploy or reinvest over $12 million in energy programs, and I'll talk about what's coming, because there's more to come this year, and then over $50 million in customer benefits, and customers have had an opportunity to see on-bill savings, Santa Maria residents already as well, and then set aside $25 million in a resiliency fund, and that actually came out of the need to, of course, ensure that we had power available to critical facilities, and that was out of a response to the initial PSS events. Additionally, since the City of Santa Maria joined the JPA, we also have opened an office in San Luis Obispo. We have not had an opportunity to have staff in there yet for obvious reasons, but we're looking forward to actually going in later this summer. And we are on our pathway together to 100% clean and renewable energy by 2030. We're looking to actually continue our goal. Right now, we have two energy choices available, and our goal really is to get to the point where instead of our default option being the one that everyone kind of focuses on or is enrolled in, that we're actually able to make it to where over time, through the development and deployment of local energy projects, that we are able to actually start to have 100% renewable energy for all customers by 2030, and that is, of course, in advance of the California goal, of course, for carbon-free by 2030. Our rates, when mentioning previously, of course, that our customers have had an opportunity to have more than $50 million in energy savings already, that's actually coming out of some different rate models that we've had in the past. So, we began or deployed our services in 2018 under a rebate model, which meant that once a year, all of our enrolled customers would receive a 3% rebate credited to them on their bill at the end of the year from the generation that they were billed for throughout the year. So, they would see that 3% rebate once a year, and that was what customers saved. We were able to increase that rebate to 5% in 2019, but we did realize that many customers, of course, did not want to wait a whole year to see their rebate or their cost benefits, right? So, we actually redesigned the way that we had our rates set to actually include a monthly on-bill discount to all customers, so they could actually see month-over-month how they were benefiting from participation. Last year, in response to COVID-19, 100% of our customers across all customer classes received a 50% reduction in their generation rate bill, so in their through CE billing statement, they saw May and June cut by 50%, and it didn't matter if it was a residential customer, ad customer, industrial customer, 100% of the customers. And all in all, over the years, that total through the end of 2020 was that over $50 million that our customers have benefited from that savings over the years. We are continuing for the remainder of this year with our 2% discount off of the generation rates. Going into 2022, we are changing the way that we design our rates to a cost-of-service rate model, which means really we are evaluating each customer's kind of usage and grouping according to how those particular customers use energy. So, we have our residential customer rates, we do have commercial customer rates, but changing that in such a way that we're actually looking at small to medium and to large, as opposed to applying a discount just across the board to all, we're actually identifying what those actual costs are to serve those customers. So, it allows us to actually have more rate stability in that we will be developing our rates, and when those rates go live, they will be in place for three years. So, our customers will be able to know what our rates are and what they can expect their energy rates to be, and on our side of the bill, that will be in place for three years. The reason that we're making those changes, first and foremost, is that the way that the current structure is, does not allow us to maximize our energy programs or set rates in a way that promote grid and climate benefits. In the past, we were really looking at how PG&E designs their rates and then putting a discount from that, and PG&E's rates are designed actually to meet their programs and their goals and not necessarily set in a way that's designed to actually meet the goals of the customers that we serve. We had over 73 different rate schedules, which rates can already be complicated. Actually doing it this way allows us to actually have fewer rate schedules, and in the past, because we were responding to PG&E's rates, rates could change anywhere from three to six times a year. So, every time PG&E made a rate change, we would have to go back and adjust our rates again, which means there was a lot of fluctuation throughout the year, and we really wanted to be able to provide consistency going forward. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, we're achieving that rate stabilization, and we will only actually be charging the customers for the cost to serve them, as opposed to looking at it from a model that was designed for another kind of service or business model overall. We're setting our rates for that three-year period based on revenue requirements, and then adjustments, right, by rate stabilization sign if the market conditions change for some reason. So, to get an understanding, there is an example that was provided here of a customer bill, so this just gives an example of a standard time of use rate, which is- bill, so this just gives an example of a standard time of use rate, which is the rate that most residential customers, per the new PG&E time of use rate, most customers will be defaulted into this rate. So, PG&E has time of use fee. Of course, we will have the same title or classification, I should say, honoring those time slots that are set up in that new time of use schedule, but we will have our generation rates fixed. So, by comparison, if we're looking at that top table, you can see that in that second column, it says 3CE's current approach to rate design. And you can see that based on those numbers, that is what the bill would look like under our current approach to the rate design, with the two different proposed rate options that customers will have the opportunity to choose from. In both cases, regardless of whether they choose the default time of use rate or they choose a seasonal flat rate, in both cases, the new cost of service model has a better benefit for the customer over what they pay under our current structure. So, transitioning from rates to programs, there are some videos on the rate design and changes available on our website, so we recorded them and put them there to answer some other questions, and may hold other workshops. But I know with the limited time that I have, I really did want to share a little bit more about what's happening right now with our programs. There are several, as you can see from the list here, as part of our 2021 energy program deployment, that Santa Maria residents are actually already eligible to participate in. First and foremost, as a member agency, we do have our Reach Code incentive program that's designed to help support electrification building codes. Additionally, and this just closed last week, but the Electrification Education Grant was open across our entire service territory, and that was for new electrification education projects. So, applicants were able to submit that to our energy program department, and it is something that is in the works ongoing for next year as well. This program is still open. We do have Santa Maria applicants already, and this is Electrify Your Ride. This is an electric vehicle incentive program. The eligibility window goes all the way back to February 1st through June 30th. So, even if someone has already purchased their vehicle, if it was between February 1st or going forward, going to purchase the vehicle by June 30th, we have set aside over seven, well, set aside $700,000 in funding. It's available on a first come, first served basis. Still funding available. This is open to residential customers as well as commercial customers who are looking to purchase passenger vehicles as part of their fleet. So, there can be up to five vehicles for businesses, public agencies, community-based organizations as well. And then in partnership with that is Charge Your Ride, which is a home electric vehicle charger program. So, we do have incentives here, and you can see that those incentives are stepped up based on whether it is a multifamily building, or if we have an income-qualified applicant that can get up to $10,000 of the project cost, up to full 100% of that cost associated with having an electric vehicle installed in their home. So, this allows to help support not just the adoption of either plug-in hybrid or electric vehicles, but it helps to put infrastructure in place into homes, into multi-unit dwellings in places where there needs to be more access to charging, so that we can, of course, see more and more of these clean energy vehicles at the road. Now, enrollment, I did want to show overall just how our enrolled communities did. Of course, you can see with Santa Maria, there's 98.8% participation by community members in Santa Maria in enrollment, and these are the end results after our March 30th. There's a very small fraction of net energy metering customers that are still set to be enrolled this summer, and one additional batch in the fall, but this is representative of the majority of the community members in Santa Maria. So, of the over 30,000, excuse me, 32,000 eligible accounts to enroll, Santa Maria actually had over 30,000 elect to participate, and that represents residential customers as well as non-residential customers. So, you can see here that the members, community members in Santa Maria were definitely interested in being a part of the new energy environment on the Central Coast. And ongoing, of course, we're continuing to unify the Central Coast as we go on for the remainder of the year with our South Santa Barbara communities that are enrolling, and as I mentioned before, with Gilton in January of 2022. There was, there was earlier in the year, an RFP that was open for local energy projects, and there's going to be another one for local energy and battery storage coming later this summer. The pathway to 100% renewable is ongoing. We do continue to have community members even reach out to request to make the switch to 100% renewable, and we are continuing to do outreach and engagement with our community-based organizations to make sure that they're aware of these programs that are open and available and continuing to be open through the end of June, especially with the electric vehicle and the electric vehicle charging station rebates that are available to the communities. And with that, that is the end of my update for the council. Of course, I will remain online. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have or members of the community may have as well. I do want to thank you, though, for giving me an opportunity to give you your update this week.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Well, thank you very much for coming to us through Zoom.
No, I just, I just want to say thank you. I actually applied to one of the programs that is offered that you spoke about, and it was, it was one of the reasons why I felt like I could afford to go green with my vehicle. So, thank you for, for putting that in place and, and the programs that are being offered to folks. It makes a big difference.
Well, thank you very much, and I'll make sure to share that, that phrase with the energy program team as well.
Yes, Ms. Waterfield. For the viewers that are viewing, San Maria being enrolled in it, does that automatically enroll all of the residents, or do they have to choose to be enrolled?
So, service began for all residents unless they elected to opt out. So, they can still continue to opt out if they do not wish to participate, but what that means is that if they opted out prior to the enrollment window closing, they could come back at any time. Now that that window has closed, if they elect to opt out now, they do have a one-year waiting period before they can re-enroll, and they would not be eligible for any programs during that time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Cordero.
Hello. For whatever reason, based on what the other two, or what Ms. Waterfield said, I still get questions from time to time from people that feel that they're not fully understanding that they are automatically enrolled at the time, at the time that the program went into effect, and in order to make any changes, they have to opt out of the program. And there's still a number of people that have asked me for whatever reason, so I'm just passing that on. They seem to be satisfied when I explain to them what they can and cannot do, but for whatever reason, that's the only thing I still get questions on regarding, regarding this program, and thank you very much.
Oh, well, thank you, though, for providing that feedback. I will make sure that the team is aware, and we can see what it is that we can do to provide some additional visibility. We are still ongoing with outreach and engagement to continue that, but we want to make sure, of course, that folks are aware of their, their options.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Williams. There are no further questions here from the dais. Next, we will have a public, next we will have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to hear protests against the abatement of public nuisances such as dangerous weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt, and if no majority protest exists, authorize the city attorney and code enforcement to perform the abatement of the nuisances of public and unimproved private lots.
Thank you. Staff report is to be made by Code Enforcement Supervisor, Ms. Castang. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. On March 18th, 2021, City Council adopted Resolution 2021-20, and this was in reference to the annual weed abatement program. The resolution declared that public and unimproved private lots that were unmaintained could be acknowledged as a public nuisance. The annual weed abatement program assures that the abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt on those unimproved lots would get cleaned up. When lots become overgrown with these weeds and trash, it just creates a nuisance. It can be a problem from a fire hazard to that nuisance. The purpose is to keep the lots properly maintained, so there isn't one. The program has historically been operated through the Public Works Department, and code enforcement was asked last year to administer the program. This is our second year. Code staff has performed a survey from last year's program and identified 153 lots. Last year, we had 168, so with the city's continued development, we have a reduction of unimproved lots by about 15. The way the program works is once staff has identified the lots, letters are mailed to the property owners, and the locations where staff is unable to contact the owners, the property is posted, and it's literally posted with a stake and a big notice that says it needs to be tidied up. Property owners are informed that they do have the option to perform the abatement or have the city perform the abatement. Owners are encouraged to maintain their own lots in conformance with the weed abatement guidelines and the fire break policy. If an owner is unable to accomplish this, staff will direct the abatement contractor to proceed with the abatement, which is basically to remove the weeds and trash from the lot. The city has then reimbursed the costs paid to the contractors through property tax billings performed by the County of Santa Barbara. This evening, staff is recommending City Council adopt a resolution over ruling the objections to the abatement of the weeds and rubbish, refuse, and dirt pursuant to Title 5, Chapter 8 of the City of Santa Maria's municipal code, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the council?
I do.
Yes. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What's the criteria to determine we send a letter in terms of, has to be certain quantity of dirt or what?
Typically, we go by county assessor records. So, when we send a letter, it would be something that we're pulling up from the county assessor for where they're already paying their taxes, and so we use that information to send out a notice. Many of them were lucky because they're folks that we've been dealing with for years and years, so we have the historical record of what's going on there. If for some reason the mail gets returned to us, then we usually will try to increase, either going through county assessor, seeing if even something else has changed in the middle or anything like that. When we do have situations where we just are unable to reach them, that's why we actually do the formal posting of the property.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? So, I'd like to open up for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or written communications?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no requests to speak or written communications regarding the weed abatement program.
Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution over ruling objections to the abatement of weed, rubbish, refuse, and dirt pursuant to Title 5, Chapter 8 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving the 2021 weed abatement program. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Castang. Appreciate it. Next, we have two regular business items to consider, and we will consider them together as one item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the titles?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll read the titles for both of those items. The City Council will receive the financial report for the third quarter ending March 31st, 2021, and the City Council will consider amendments to the 2020-2021 budget for personnel and operational changes in the third quarter ending March 31st, 2021. That would be Item 6A and 6B.
Thank you. Staff report is to be made by Director of Finance, Ms. Harvey. Good evening, Ms. Harvey.
Good evening. Good evening, honorable mayor, councilmembers, staff, and public. Tonight, I will briefly present the quarterly financial report for the third quarter ended March 31st, 2021. I will be primarily reviewing the general fund, including Measure U and the enterprise funds. The beginning general fund balance of $10,071,000 is the unaudited balance at July 1st, 2020. Concerning city revenues through the third quarter of the year, sales tax revenues are approximately $2.6 million or 15% greater than the third quarter last fiscal year. The increase is primarily due to growth in allocations from the county and state pools as a result of the 2018 Supreme Court Wayfair decision. The decision allows states to require out-of-state retailers to collect and remit sales tax for goods sold online to customers within the state. Sales growth in business and industry, building and construction, and food and drug categories also contributed to the high revenue, higher revenue, but were offset by declines in fuel and service stations, general consumer goods, and restaurant and hotel categories. Through March, TOT receipts are about $278,000 less than last fiscal year and are falling short of estimates of by about $182,000 or 6.6%. Normally, the summer months produce a large portion of TOT annual revenues, but due to COVID, that did not occur. However, with fewer COVID cases and more people vaccinated, staff anticipates an uptick in TOT in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. NHIS receipts through the third quarter are just under $451,000 compared to $1.2 million last fiscal year, and that is a 60% decrease. The majority of NHIS material received during the third quarter came from PG&E's South Bradley Road Project. Several projects could resume in the fourth quarter, however, impacts and restrictions related to the coronavirus continue to make it challenging to predict when project cycles may begin. As a result, staff has continued to forecast nominal NHIS activities in 2021 in comparison to the previous years. Permit revenue is ahead of estimates at 104.9% or $2.3 million and is about 30% less than the third quarter of last fiscal year. The city issued 217 permits for accessory dwelling units through March, which is more than they had anticipated for the entire fiscal year. Commercial activity, including Dutch Brothers, DeVito Dialysis, and Clean &amp; Dash Laundromat also contributed to the higher-than-expected revenues. However, those were smaller projects compared to permits issued in the previous fiscal year for major developments in Enos Ranch, including Toyota and Honda dealerships, and it kept that accounts for the year-over-year decrease in revenues. Turning to general fund expenditures, they are at 69.2% of budget and include $2.1 million in salary savings and $1.8 million from contracts and services, namely work on the general plan update that will take several years to complete. Based on the latest year-end revenue and expenditure estimates, it appears that the $4.4 billion transfer from the LEAF Reserve Fund may not be needed to maintain the general fund balance of $10.1 million. While this is good news, I would be remiss if I did not reiterate that LEAF reserves are intended to address severe shortfalls in revenues that are temporary in nature, and the current reserve LEAF balance of about $9.1 million is not sufficient to mitigate the acceleration of ongoing pension and other operating costs the city is facing. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the third quarter are ahead of budget at 95% of budget. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the third quarter are ahead of budget at 95% or 6.4 million. Expenditures are at 70.8% of budget or approximately 795,000 under budget. Most of the budget under run is due to vacancies in the police department. The library and recreation and parks departments are also under budget because of operational restrictions under health orders to address COVID-19. The fire department is over budget due to increased overtime incurred to cover vacant positions and higher workers, higher workers' compensation expense. The Measure U budget allocations remain at 90% for public safety, 5% for youth services, and 5% for quality of life. But due to the COVID shutdowns through March, 92% of Measure U expenditures have been spent on public safety, 3% on youth services, and 5% on quality of life. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenues exceeded expenditures by 2.9 million, which is about 3.5 million more than last year. This variance is due to implementation of new water and sewer rates that went into effect January 2020 and January 2021, and a decrease in capital expenditures of about 1.3 million. Expenditures included the semi-annual debt service payments totaling 2.6 million for the 2012 refunding bonds. For the solid waste fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by nearly 1.5 million compared to the prior revenues increased by approximately 3 million and expenditures increased by 1.5 million. Operational expenses are about 11.5% or 1.9 million greater than the previous year, but revenues are also up about 16% or 3 million. The transit fund revenues are less than expenditures by about 408,000, primarily due to pending receipt of grants, revenues, operations, and capital cost, excuse me, capital projects. Fair revenue is down 93% or 557,000 due to the city waiving transit fees, fares to assist customers during COVID-19 pandemic. The city waived approximately 319,000 of fares from July through March. The fare box ratio through the third quarter is 1.5% and would have been 13.3% had fares not been waived. In conjunction with the third quarter financial report, staff is recommending five budget amendments presented for council's consideration. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of Ms. Harvey? None? Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to bring these items back to the council for any discussion and/or a motion.
I will move to adopt the resolution approving the amendments to the 2021 budget for personnel and operations changes in the third quarter ending March 31st, 2021.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second and any, for the, for the resolution and to adopt the budget amendments. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you, and the quarterly, quarterly report has been received and will be filed. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. You make that report so easy to read. I appreciate it. Ms. Soto?
Can I just give a shout out to the Recreation and Parks Department for their support in, in making sure that young people during the summer months have access to our Manami Community Center? I know that these were conversations that we as a council were having, I think, last year when we're, we're talking about the importance of making sure that, you know, young people had access to our community centers, especially during the times that they're not in school. And so I just really wanted to thank our director, Alex Posada, for, for like supporting this initiative, but also everybody on city staff who worked out the numbers and brought this to us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I think if you see on the, on the consent calendar, we got a couple, two grants, I guess, but one grant is for the teen, for teen tricks, so that's going to be exciting for the kids. Thank you. The next item will be a report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. So I'd like to start by saying today is May 18th. It's my sister's birthday, and she's starting a new decade in her life. The next meeting of the city council is June 1st, and some items of note, we will have a, an award of a bid for zero emission bus fleet rollout. So we are moving our buses to zero emissions. That'll be an opportunity for the council to review the bids on that. We also plan to bring forward the historic designation of the Smith Enos House as repairs and rehabilitation to that house continues. And Downtown Fridays has started again, so we'll work to get a, a presentation to the council and prioritize the community about what's in store for Downtown Fridays this upcoming year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So the next item is oral reports of council members. Mr. Cordero, shall we begin, begin with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 5th, I attended the Citizen of the Year Award that was put on by the Elks. It was, it was exciting in more ways than one. Just the idea that, that the community is obviously starting to come back together. The Elks made their observations with regard to social distancing, but, but we had something going on inside of the facility, which was certainly a good feeling for everyone who was in attendance. And the, this year's recipient, I think you're aware, was Mr. Labastida for the, for his work with regard to the cancer, and there was quite, quite a story that was told, and that was very, very exciting to be a part of. So it was just nice to see our community starting to come back together. On the, on the 6th, I was at the Day of Prayer that was done a little differently this year, of course, it was at the Fairgrounds. And maybe because I know him, it, it, when, when the pastors were giving their speech, it was just really moving to have, to have them speak, speak on, on what they were talking about, and it was really also a moving event to see that we're coming back together. And on the 8th, I was at the Boys and Girls Club. My wife had some business as a board member there, and I went and met with the new CEO, Michael Boyer. I don't know if anybody here has met him. He's the new kid in the block, so to speak. Hard worker, obviously a, a young man and has our youth and the community at heart. And I can share with you from what I, what little I know about the commercial fishing business out of Alaska, that he worked very hard for his college money. He just seems to be a real exciting young person, and I had an opportunity to look at the room that the city helped to finance with the CDPG money last year, and it's, they called it, I think, the teen room. And I just thought perhaps it was just a room that they touched up there, and it's not. It's much more than that. It's a separate room that they put some, took some doors out, put some doors in, and it's a room that totally separates the young children from the teenagers, which gives them their own space. There's computers in there to help the kids do their homework. It's monitored. It's a really nice facility that gives these young adults a place to, to socialize just at their level, and they're, and they're not bothered by the, by the young kids that want to play ball and tag and these kinds of things. And it was a very, very exciting visit with Mr. Boyer. And if you get an opportunity to go by and look at that room, it's, it's worth just to stop a, a brief visit, tell them who you are, and there's a little tour you can go on there. And that'll be it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You know, while you're bringing up the Elks, some people have asked me, are they open for the cook-your-own on Friday nights or the family dinners on Monday?
Not yet. They should be opening up on the 15th. In fact, they've gone so far as to book a van for that first, first night after the 15th, after the, the governor opens it up. I don't see anything in the weeds that might indicate that they won't open it up, and they've gone ahead and, and did it. They are doing their, I think they call it the grab-and-go, where you can drive by in your car, with your car, and they'll put dinners into your, into your car, and you tell them how much you want, and, but we participate in that quite a bit, but not yet. You can go inside for the Friday night cook-your-own for what they have on the menu. You don't get to cook your own, but you can go inside as a member as long as they maintain the social distancing until the 14th.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Ms. Soto?
I attended the Elks Citizen of the Year Award on Wednesday, May 5th, and then last Thursday, May 13th, I attended the Elected Leaders Forum on homelessness.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
Let's see. I also attended the Santa Maria Elks Citizen of the Year Event. We did not, I did not do the Ben Hayes Show on Wednesday because he had a prior engagement, so he couldn't do that, which gave me a day off, which was good. Thursday, May 6th, the National Day of Prayer, I attended that, and Madam Mayor, I believe that's it.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did attend the, on May 5th, the Santa, the Santa Maria Elks Citizen of the Year, where it was also, it was first presented, the 2020 winner, Mr. Connor, and then 2021, Mr. Labastida, and I appreciate, and I said thank you for those two people that contributed a lot to our community. I personally have been getting to know Mr. Connor for a while, and it's a great person. I've been, it's pretty approachable. He's open to share his experience, so, and getting to know more about Mr. Labastida and what he's been doing for, to fight and contribute to the community for, for cancer, it's, it's pretty touching because my mom's, mom, she passed away from cancer, and there was people that support her and like Mr. Labastida and the organizations, so I extend my, my respect and admiration to Mr. Labastida and everything he's been doing. On May 13th, I attended the Elected Leaders Forum for homelessness. On May 16th, it was a fun day. I attended two events. First, I did a drive-through from the Humane, the Santa Barbara Humane Society. They, they're expanding their, basically the idea was a drive-through, so we were handing some, some bags with food for dogs or cats and different resources, how to cook certain treats for the, for the, for the dogs and cats. It was really fun, and also had a tour of their facility, and it was great. It's pretty big. It, I invite everybody to visit that, and maybe, who knows, maybe get a new dog or a duck, one dog or a cat. And then I went to the Family Bike Day on the, on the third floor of the parking lot at the mall. It was really good, a lot of kids riding. I always enjoy seeing families coming together and riding their bikes. Of course, I'm biased because I love bicycles and, but especially the little kids and their small bikes, just having fun, that's, that was, that was really, really fun, and that's pretty much what I did.
Thank you very much. May, May 7th, I did the Rick Blaymeyer Radio Show. On the 10th of May, I did the Mayor's Task Force on Youth Safety, the Teen Academy Monthly Meeting. On the 11th of May, I spoke at the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors Meeting. May 12th, I did the North County Subregional Meeting, and the Central Coast Community Energy Special Joint Meeting of the Policy and Operations Board, which we saw the, the report given tonight. On May 13th, I did the Santa Barbara County Legislative Meeting. And May 18th, this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show and Rotary. That's it. Anything else from the dais? Hearing nothing. This meeting is adjourned.